Between a peer review and either a supplemental or a sequential EIR. Explain the difference in lay terms. What does that mean?
A supplemental EIR is a formal document that has rules about how it should be written and how it needs to be circulated and how long you have to allow people to comment on it. A peer review is just sort of a term of art for having experts look at a topic. There's no requirement of how you go about doing it, or whether or not you have to send it to certain agencies, or whether or not you have to write up certain findings on the peer review. It's simply a study.
And when they do the study, what data did they use to do their analysis?
Well, they used a variety of data from several reports. And in fact, the data from Group De La Consultans, data from Camp Dresser and McGee, data from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and also any other data or reports or information that was submitted during the process.
Michael Mulhern, a geologist from the city's Bureau of Engineering, explains how the data was collected and evaluated.
The most data was collected in a couple of dozen groundwater monitoring wells by Camp Dresser and McGee over a period of several years. But both they and I have looked through the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the state agencies' records back for several years, because this site has had a long history of exploration, back even when Hughes Aircraft was operating it and had tunnels underground and so on with no methane devices. So we looked at several years of old data, and also, as Jerry mentioned, there was one new Sentinel well that the Regional Water Quality Control Board asked to have installed. This is a well between the plumes and the de-watering area to make sure that when the de-watering actually occurs, there's no movement of these plumes, and that's an extra data point. Both myself and the two expert firms witnessed the drilling of that well, the sampling and so on, to make sure it was all done to state standards.
Public comment is next, and we hear from both sides on the issue.
We are here today to request your approval of the CLA report on the issue of de-watering associated with methane systems at Phase 1 Playa Vista. I would like to take a minute and ask all the Playa Vista residents, supporters, and workers that are here today, who have been here for several hours to stand, both to stretch their legs and see if they still have blood in them, and to show you that the people of the community, the people of Playa Vista, very much want this concluded. This has been a year and a half-long process, and they would like to see it concluded, and we'd ask for your approval today. Thank you very much. Following a study which has lasted well over a year, the CLA is recommending to you that the council find that groundwater de-watering associated with the methane mitigation systems at Playa Vista will not cause any significant act on the environment, and there is no need for a supplemental or a subsequent EIR.
The lower court has already asked, Ms. Phan knows full well that the lower court has asked you to bring in this CLA report in order to determine if it has complied with the writ. If it has complied with the writ, if it has complied with the writ. The lower court in no way agrees with the city on these issues. And the lower court agrees that we must take all of these issues up to the appellate court for clarification of this entire process. Right now, Ms. Phan is telling you what we have already considered to be contempt of court. That is what is in the courts right now. And to do anything further, to vacate the approval of the motion that this city filed, vacating the approval of the methane mitigation measures, will put the city in further contempt of court. Now, do you want to risk that? There you are. However, all of this is before the courts. Yes, this is a very legal issue, and we are dealing with it in the courts. For me to stand here and take two minutes while these people sit up here and tell you other things, obviously, we need the court system to sort all of this out.
Addressing staff, District 5 Councilmember Jack Weiss asks for further clarification and enlightenment on the court's request.
You heard discussion during public comment about the court's order, and then I've heard discussion from you and Mr. McWilliams about statements the court made that you have on the transcript of various hearings. I'd like you to walk us through that again and conclude by telling me, is there any ambiguity in what the court has ordered the city to do?
In terms of the issue about whether the court wants the city attorney, the city to act, and then it will make a decision on whether we have fulfilled our responsibilities. I'll read you from the transcript. Starting out, Mr. Fine, who is the attorney for petitioners, addressing the court, "Well, with all due respect, the court..." Let me stop you. Again, I think this point has been discussed sufficiently. Again, it really will depend upon what the report will say in this regard, and I will wait until the report comes out, and then, at that point in time, I will take a look at it. And the report that the court was referring to, and this was a couple of weeks ago, is the CLA report. So clearly, the court wants to have the CLA or the city council to take an action, and then it will look at it.
Saying that safety is still an issue, Bill Rosendahl asks, "What's the big deal in doing a supplemental EIR, an environmental impact report?"
I am not comfortable that we have maybe adequately done it legally, as my esteemed colleague did legally, but it's a safety issue, and let's hope that it is safe, because I don't have the votes around the council to move forward with it. But I'm going to stay strong on this until I'm comfortable and you're all comfortable that it is safe. It's still an issue for me.
Okay, the matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl cast the single no vote. The report generated by the chief legislative analyst will now be submitted to the court for review. At Friday's meeting, District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn stands to present a motion that would offer a $50,000 reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the shooting and subsequent death of Arturo Mercado.
It's very much a part of what's happened in the Harbor Gateway area. And while a lot of attention, and for me, actually, I even use the word "the tipping point" for gang violence in Los Angeles, was the death of 14-year-old Cheryl Miller in the Harbor Gateway. However, the police, with their great police work, have been able to capture suspects and are moving forward with convictions on that one. But Arturo Ponce Mercado, a 34-year-old, was also brutally gunned down in the Harbor Gateway area, actually, a few days before Cheryl was killed. And he was standing in his driveway in the 1500 block of 205th Street in the Harbor Gateway, and was gunned down. And many of the community members felt like this was also a racially motivated murder. However, there's no evidence since been, or witnesses that have come forth to verify that. But this was also a senseless murder. And the racial tension in that area cried out that we put as much effort, and we also offer a reward for the killing of Arturo, as the attention that we placed on the killing of Cheryl. Any murder, any senseless cowardly act that results in a murder of an innocent person should draw all of our attentions and demand that we all do whatever we can to end that violence. So we're offering today a $50,000 reward that we hope will compel witnesses to come forward. Everyone believes someone saw what happened. They do know what happened. They did see something. So we're asking that the community members come forward, provide evidence to LAPD, so we can also solve this terrible crime. Because until we kind of move past the terrible murders of Cheryl and Arturo, long-term healing and long-term solutions for this community, I don't believe will really be able to gel. So we're hoping that this can be solved so that we can bring a little peace, a little closure, to Arturo's family, as well as what we're doing to heal the death of Cheryl Green. We're meeting in the Harbor Gateway area every two weeks with community members. I'm meeting with them in 186th Street School to do the same things that we did in Watts a year ago, to try to figure out what's the root cause of the violence. We've had law enforcement come down in the Harbor Gateway area, which is welcome, but we know that, long-term, we're going to have to deal with this racial tension. We're going to have to deal with keeping kids out of gangs in the first place. But I ask that you'll support this, and we're asking the community, if they know of anything, they can call anonymously. They can call Sergeant Rosemary Piazza at (310) 522-2040. That's (310) 522-2040. Colleagues, I hope you'll support me in offering this $50,000 reward to try to solve this problem and finally, begin to heal the Harbor Gateway area of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you.
Again, the number to call if you have any information is (310) 522-2040. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall, or by calling (213) 978-1046, or of course, by dialing (311), your one call to City Hall. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March 2, 2007. On behalf of Kelly Walkman and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for March 6th, 2007. We are here in John Ferraro Memorial Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. Happy Election Day to everybody, and we remind our viewers that there is still time to go out there and vote in our municipal, City College and our, sorry, Community College and our school district election, so make sure you get out there and vote today. We are here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday in City Council Chambers at 10:00 a.m., where we meet regularly, save for the first Friday of the month, when we meet in Van Nuys City Hall, as we did last week. We also take the show on the road, as we did last week, in the Harbor area, and we had our meeting there in our efforts to take City Council closer to where all Angelinos live. We invite members of the public to come and testify in general public comment on items that are scheduled to have public hearings. Some of the items on our agendas are not scheduled for public hearings, and those are ones that have already had their public hearing in committee, but all items before the City Council will have a public hearing either in committee or the full City Council. We also invite members of the public to come and to speak on general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And if you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always testify remotely from Van Nuys, and we are able to see you here in council chambers. Finally, you can watch us live on Channel 35. We want to welcome our cable viewers on LA City View. We also are available online at lacity.org, where there is live streaming webcast video of our council meetings. And finally, you can call in to council phone, a service of being able to listen to the audio portions of our council committee meetings and our full council meetings at (213) 621-CITY. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gural, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zane, Garcetti, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. Those commendatory resolutions will be approved if nobody objects. Next order of business.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Ms. Han, would you be nice enough to lead us in the salute to the flag on this election day?
I would.
If I can ask everybody in chambers to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, and we want to remind everybody that it is Election Day today, and this is one of the greatest privileges that we have in this country, is the ability to vote, and we hope everybody exercises that privilege today. Let's salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Next order of business.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Sure. Well, let's run through the agenda real quick, and then we'll come back to public comment.
Item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. It's ordinance first reading relative to the Wilmington parking BID.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That will go over one week, as we have fewer than 12 members present for the ordinance. Next items, please.
Next item are also ordinances, street lighting, district ordinances, items 2 through 9.
Colleagues, anybody wishing to call 2 through 9 special? Go on once, go on twice. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And those 2 will go over one week.
Mr. President, you did have 12.
Oh, we, okay, let's go ahead and reconsider all the ordinance items. If we can open the roll.
That would just be item number 1.
Okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12, 12 ayes.
And if we can take that up again, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that will be approved, then. Next items.
Next items are items to which public hearings have been held, items 10 through 30. On item 30, there are 2 reports on the file, and the recommendations do differ.
Okay, so just to clarify, 2 through 9, we did have 12 already when we voted?
Yes, Mr. President, they were.
All right. Colleagues, any specials that were 10, yes?
Yes, I'd like to call item 17 and 25 special.
Okay, 17 and 25 for Ms. Han. Mr. Parks? 12 for Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith?
After here 26, since you have 2 reports.
You can move one of them if you'd like to. Are they conflicting reports, Madam Clerk?
Yes. On item 30, yes, they are.
Would you like to call it special? Or would you like to move one of them?
Was it 30 or 26?
26.
26.
No, there's 2 reports on 30, and 26, it looks like, just has 1.
Well, let's call 26.
Okay. All right. And on 30, are those conflicting?
Yes, they are.
Move the budget and finance, because there's new information about the number of bids that are now needed.
We'll call 26 special for Mr. Smith, and 30, we have moved the budget and finance committee report. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
The balance is approved. Next items.
Next items are items to which public hearings have not been held, items 31 through 53. 10 votes are required for consideration, and on 31, that's a confirmation of the CAO. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk, please. And we have cards on any of those items?
I believe there are cards on 31, 36, and 48, and I believe one was just turned in. I'm not sure if that was 53.
Let me see here, 54. That's in the next section, so, okay. On the rest, we'll open and close the public hearing. Colleagues, any specials on these? Special items? Not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next item, Mr. President, is on the supplemental agenda, item 54. Public hearing has been held, and that's confirmation for the permanent general manager of Dunn.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special?
Mr. President, I believe there are cards on that, and the committee report has not been submitted as yet. It was in committee this morning.
We have had a public hearing on this, though?
I believe there was only 1 committee member there, so it would not have a public hearing.
Okay, so it didn't qualify, so that will be triggered by cards? Special? Next items, please.
56 and 57, excuse me, 55 and 56 are items which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, colleagues, 55 or 56, there are no cards, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call this special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Parks?
Number 6 and 10, forthwith.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll go forthwith on number 6 and on number 10. Everything's going to be forthwith today? Okay. Colleagues, we will send everything forthwith today if there's no objection. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas for an introduction.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce our guest over here to our left. Please help me welcome members of the Cooperative Association of States for Scholarships, otherwise known as CAS. CAS is a joint partnership between the U.S. Agency for International Development, USAID, and the Georgetown University Center for Intercultural Education and Development. This year, 20 recipients attended the Cal Poly Pomona session on rural microfinance. These students represent areas throughout Latin America. The CAS program provided them with the technical and professional training necessary to begin economic development in their hometowns in the areas of agricultural technology, business, and environmental health. Since 1989, the CAS program has reached out to over 5,000 individuals. Please help me welcome the organization CAS. Thank you for your wonderful international work. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and I'd like to also introduce visiting students in the back from my alma mater, the University Elementary School, Corrine Seeds University Elementary School, a group of 7- to 9-year-olds who are here. In fact, I think the first time I ever came to City Hall was as a student just like them, myself, years ago. They're visiting downtown today as part of their curriculum on the study of Los Angeles, and they've been learning about the history, the people, and the unique places that make Los Angeles one of the most important cities in the world. The students and their teachers, Ms. Monica Costa, Mrs. Genevieve Darcy, Ms. Kim Stager, Mr. Alocón, will be visiting City Hall, El Pueblo, and other places in the area, including Central Library, Disney Hall, Chinatown, MacArthur Park, and a number of art stops along the Metro Red and Gold Line. So we welcome you from UES and from Seeds, where it's great to have you here, and please give them a round of applause to welcome them to council chambers. And as Tom Labange would say, make sure you see the top of the building. Go up the tower and see the view from there on a beautiful day like today. We'll return now to public comment, if we can call forward the following individuals. And just before we start, Mr. City Attorney, he said, since it's Election Day, if you'd like to just lay some ground rules down for the speakers today.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the public's education, the propriety or the appropriateness of the candidates for the school board races, community college races, and the LAUSD school board races are not before this body, they're not within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker will be Dave Thompson, and after that will be Noel Weiss. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
I'm Dave Thompson. Can you hear me? Is this the way it's done?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm Dave Thompson, and I'm a community activist. I want to thank the City Council allowing this public comment to take place. It's democracy at work. Six and a half years ago, I came to Los Angeles to do public access TV, and I found out that Media One and L. D. C. Cable charting $35 a show, need 2 a producer for each show. That isn't what public access is about. When the cable companies wanted to get their cables on public land, they told the public they would give them a free channel, and they reneged on that promise. I complained bitterly to the people in Media One. I called up Mr. Rosendahl. I talked to him 5 minutes. He says, "It is unfair. We're going to reduce, we're going to eliminate that fee." But Media One would not eliminate the fee. They would not eliminate the fee, no matter how hard I tried. I got angry at them, and they 86ed me, suspended me from all their studios. Then it became Comcast. The same person who suspended me from all the studios is now in charge of all, almost all of the studios in Los Angeles by Time Warner. This man is ruthless. I go to his, I told him, they had to require by law to allow me to submit tapes, and he let me go to the business section of it to submit tapes. I get along with those people. I've never had one problem every 6 months or so of asking a reinstatement, and he will not do it. One of the definitions of ruthlessness is impactability and no compassion. Now, he's in charge of about 9 or 10 studios, all in Los Angeles. Since he's been in charge, I've been suspended from 1 studio. The staff member of another studio won't answer my phone calls. I keep asking them to give me a review of why I was suspended. They won't do that.
Mr. President, I do not know whether this is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead. You have 15 seconds left. I think under cable access, which is under our jurisdiction, please go ahead.
Can I go on?
Please.
Anyway, I'm just asking Time Warner to correct their mistakes and correct public access. I can have this platter all over LA if I want to, but I got a few minutes, because I was interrupted.
Can I take 5 more seconds? Go ahead.
Stop Time Warner, go to cable, go to satellite. I've talked to a gentleman here, and he says the email on Time Warner is terrible. I've talked to 2 other people. They say they get satellite, it's cheaper most of the time, and it's much better. So I'm asking the people to punish Time Warner and go to satellite. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Noel Weiss is our next speaker, and then Sylvia Lynn Hawkins will be after that.
Council members, good morning. I'm here to speak on 2 items, the first item being Mr. Weston's substitute tenant relocation proposal. I think the public needs a clear explanation of the reasons behind Mr. Weston's proposal. We don't have that, and we're looking forward to the opportunity, hopefully, that when Mr. Weston will put forward something in writing that will communicate to us all the specifics and the details and the reasons why he did what he did and the justification for it. Second item upon which I wish to speak is the potential for another Lincoln Place in Valley Village. This is a potential issue that is critical, because Lincoln Place is basically a monument to the failure of our system. We have the potential in Magnolia Boulevard for acreage vacant apartments. Again, the developer, Mr. Sheffield, bought at the height of his speculative boom. He's now stuck with trying to build on the backs of infrastructure, which is insufficient. There's no sewage, there's insufficient storm drain. I've asked him to work with the tenants. His response is basically to Ellis the tenants and to be unwilling to work with us. I've got every confidence. I'm hopeful that Wendy Grue will step up, exercise the leadership of which she's capable. So this won't end up being another Lincoln Place on Magnolia Boulevard. What's happening with these tenants is not right. It's an example of the kinds of games that these land use entitlement speculators now are playing on the backs of the tenants and the people of the city. It's got to stop, and I think this pure 9 and 17 package, where the tenant relocation dollars will be increased, will aid in dampening the speculation, and hopefully also lead to the kind of debate which needs to occur on what is a suitable housing policy, because the City Council hasn't done it in the last 15 years, and I think it's long overdue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Hawkins. I am very much concerned about the time periods that is happening in rehabilitation that should be cut to between 3 months and 6 months of how long they should be in rehabilitation buildings, halfway houses, living in these areas, whether or without an anchor alarm device on to alert the police if they leave the apartment or building. For example, in Memphis, Tennessee, one of my friends was on house arrest, but escaped it out as he was receiving visitors to his apartment to see him, committed a murder of his mother, then later received the inheritance, then went back inside of the rehab as the visitor and himself exchanged anchor devices and shared the money lately, or later. The device was not successful for them to come out of the jail, and now with a device on in a rehabilitation building, which means they can exchange the device on the anchor. I am very much concerned. How long are we going to let these people live in rehabilitation buildings? Again, it should be cut in time if we are cutting them in time of being in jail cells. We cannot let them live in rehabilitation buildings for 1 year, 2 years. I am with a decision of time, which is 3 months to 6 months, before they must move on to their next avenue, because it turns into now a building of rehabilitation or halfway houses of thieves. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. Our next speaker is Irene Casmer.
I'm Irene Casmer, and I am a designer for 50 years, a manufacturer employing hundreds of thousands of people, and that's why the industry became the fashion capital of the world. And I am here to correct a little bit our mayor, Villarreal Rosa, because he said he is dubbing it the fashion capital of the world, when it was already dubbed years and years ago the fashion capital of the world. I just want to put the record straight, and it's nice to see all of you, some people I met, some people I didn't meet, and I miss you all when I don't come here, but I have to work, make money, and employ people. Thank you very much, Irene Casmer. You have a nice day.
Thank you, Irene. Nice to see you. Chuck Tenon is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. Chuck Tenon, nice to see you again, Mr. Garcetti, President Garcetti. A disturbing situation that violates tenants' human rights with regard to evictions. The flip-flop and sell, a cruel tactical game used by developers to flush out an obstacle that stands in their way, tenants from their property. Especially when things go bad, they make the tenants suffer too, adding to the effect of tenants' state of mind, uncertainty, being displaced. This is what's happening in many parts of LA. I live on West Magnolia Boulevard in Valley Village, Council District 2, Wendy Grue, where rows of existing affordable housing are destined to be demolished, and many elderly seniors and disabled are being displaced, yet there's no track maps been approved. 2 weeks ago, in our building, tenants were told by the developer not to worry, the time will be extended to many months or a year, because we're nowhere near getting where this project is being approved. And then 2 weeks later, the same tenants told by the developer that the drop dead date is May the 18th. I want all the tenants out of my building, because the market's down, and my track map was not approved because of the tenants. So I want the tenants to suffer like I'm suffering. Well, you know, tenants are people, and they have rights, dignity, and they don't need unnecessary harassment, mental stress, and cruelty from developers that affect their lives, especially when they're faced with an eviction. And do it for the right reasons. Don't do it prematurely to get rid of people, because you have bad problems. Be fair, and the city stands by and allows this type of tactical game to go on. Final note, the 9 and 17 relocation assistance coming up for vote on March 28th. Don't allow it to drag on and turn into unnecessary complicated nightmare. So council members, put your vote where your heart is, and Ed Reyes and Herb, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenon. We'll go out to Van Nuys for our next 3 speakers, Mr. Zumadog, and then Sharon Brewer, and then Donna Perman.
Eric, by the way, Eric, if you could please hold my time. I hate to start the week off on this note, but there's 4 of us here, so the city clerk, they can't get the cards in fast enough. I had, I was here, first of all, there were no agendas printed, so we had to get the agendas printed. There's 4 of us here. Then by the time you did it, I wanted to speak on 5 items, but if I could just do 46, 48, 54, I'd really appreciate it. I was here at like 9:15 in the morning, and I'm sorry about that. But now, let's just say, reminder for city council members, you want to do some community outreach? I've got a great idea. Mr. KABC, now known as Mark Germain, will be heard weekdays, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
If you could, Doc.
On K-Talk, 11:50 a.m.
Keep your comments to things that are under our jurisdiction, please, Mr. Dog.
Well, I was going to say that of community outreach in the neighborhood councils, there's a big issue of community outreach, and to have more participation. And Zumadog was just saying, I've used the media so effectively by calling into Mr. KABC Show, now Mark Germain, on K-Talk, 11:50 a.m. from 3:00 to 7:00. I'm saying you should do the same thing. Call up and say, "Hello, Mr. KABC, this is Councilmember Eric Garcetti, or Councilmember Janice Han, we've got something called Neighborhood Councils, and we need more community participation. So please pick up the phone and dial 311 and ask for your council members."
I appreciate the advice, but it's not directly under our jurisdiction, so could you please confine your comments to stuff that's under our jurisdiction?
All right, well, let's talk about the Grand Avenue Project, then, y'all, the Grand Avenue Project. Eli Brode claims that he resigned. Don't believe that spin, and I like to say, we got to do something. The Grand Avenue Project, there is, first of all, why are we giving public land to a private company and letting them take over of public land? Secondly, there's no infrastructure the streets can't accommodate. I heard Jan Perry on TV 7 about a few months ago have to admit the parking isn't appropriate either. Thirdly, the police can't handle it. They've already said we can't handle things anyway, and now you want to do that? Okay, so now I'll talk about the Grand Avenue Project. Maybe I'll just do a whole article about it, y'all, and how about the, can I do those 3 items, by the way, Eric?
Yeah, 2 of them have already been called special. We'll make sure 46 is included. Ms. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer. CD 6 Updates and Concerns. April 1st, 2007, Persian New Year event, Lake Balboa and Tire Basin. Event is 25 days from today. Recreation and Parks still has not provided any information about an event that could attract over 20,000 people. Why is Recreation and Parks stalling about providing information about this event to the public? San Fernando Valley Fair update. Daily news, Saturday, March 3rd, Valley Fair again will be a name-only. Saga Speedway's chosen as site of 61st Celebration. Letter, December 3rd, 2006, contract with Recreation and Parks. Number 2, alternate to facility use fees. San Fernando Valley Fair was supposed to do a minimum value of $10,000 of capital projects, and since the fair's not going to be there, I'd like to know who is going to take and provide that $10,000 for the improvements, possibly CD 6. Lake Balboa, Sunday, March 4th, public safety. I called Office of Public Safety about illegally parked cars at 9:35, called again at 2:25. They showed up at 3:05, did nothing, went through the park again at 3:20, and still did nothing about the illegally parked cars. Public information, Recreation and Parks Board of Commission meeting, Wednesday, tomorrow, March 7th, 5:30 p.m., Delano Rec. Center, 15100 Urin Street, behind the Costco on Sepulveda. The illegal parking, the cars are parking on the grass where they could be leaking antifreeze, gas, oil, and where the ducks and the wildlife are grazing and laying down. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Perman is our next speaker. Donna Perman?
I didn't really mean that, thank you, y'all. I don't think he really meant that, thank you. Mr. Garcetti, could I let Miriam Fogler speak? She was there before me.
I'm sorry, if you could just speak. We have her card. We just handed it to me, so go ahead, please.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Be sure, I want to tell everybody to be sure to vote against Proposition L. If you think teachers are not being paid right now, they're not going to be paid at all.
Excuse me, we'll pause your time. If you could ask Mr. Dog in the background to please be respectful to the other speakers. That'll be a last warning. Thank you. Go ahead.
You didn't say anything about propositions. Okay, yeah, I also like to speak about over there at Sepulveda Basin. I go over there, me and my boyfriend, we fly model airplanes, and we're also concerned about the ducks, and we don't need any, oh, we don't need any more development, and we don't need any more, like, any more orange line. And I like to speak also, but the housing's such innate, they should be nicer. And let's see, oh, yeah, Mr. Garcetti, please don't shut down Zumadog and let him speak, because he is a voter, and I'm going to let Miriam Fogler speak, because I'm kind of nervous.
We have other speakers before that, and I can assure you, Mr. Dog speaks more than anybody in Los Angeles, so don't worry. Matthew Preston Schubert is our next speaker, here.
Good morning to the City Council. My name is Matthew Preston Schubert. I was here once before. I voiced a concern regarding the Los Angeles Police Department and their false arrest. Mr. Tom LaBuck, I apologize for pronouncing his last Mr. Tom LaBuck, I apologize for pronouncing his last name wrong if I did, the City Council, is responsible for the Wilcox Hollywood Police Department. He has shown non-responsibility, non-compliance in fixing the Los Angeles Police Department, Wilcox area, which is the department which he is over. At the second motion, I voice a concern regarding the new Chief of Police, Mr. William J. Bratton. He is, I feel that he is unable, insufficient for the Chief of Police. He has conducted himself in inappropriate manner. He has, I believe the Chief of Police is supposed to be the last person to speak about issues. He has been the first person to speak about certain issues and regarding a Chief of Police prostitute, actually, a Chief Executive prostituting himself and having others for positions, females for higher up positions. That was in the city newspaper, 1221, 2006. My concern is that Mr. William J. Bratton is insufficient, and I propose a new Chief of Police. I believe that our Chief of Police should walk into the Police Department to be sufficient and should know how to deal with the police officers at all occasions and all times. I believe that the Chief of Police should adjudicate and side with the community as well as the officers. Chief of Police has not sided with the community. Example, a 12-year-old boy who was shot, African American, that Chief of Police did not side with the community whatsoever. The 19-year-old month baby who was shot by sharpshooters or by, I believe that was SWAT team, did not, Chief of Police did not compensate with the community at all. That is it. Until next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker here.
Yes, my name is Oscar Johnson. I'm an activist for the homeless in Los Angeles, and I still think the city of Los Angeles should create more, a more comfortable environment for the women and children on Skid Row. The places on Skid Row is very demolished, and our mayor's team, as though he don't care about the citizens of Los Angeles, the peoples of Los Angeles are dying, they need jobs, we need education. And our federal government is, seem to be a federal government fraud. I have sent some serious papers to the federal government, and the place is 312 North Spring Street on the 17th floor. They tell me they haven't received them. I have them photocopied. They've seen as though they've been trying to protect the Police Department and the Fire Department, but I can see how our Fire Department is so out of hand because we have so much unfit authority in our city government, and our city government is going along for the ride just for a paycheck, just to be in the house in some nice office while the citizen of Los Angeles is dying in the street. And in such embarrassing moments and critical times we're living in, you see no citizen from the city of Los Angeles complaining about nothing, which direction the city's going. And the only time you see the mayor is when he gets the $160 million a year for the homeless and send it to two or three nonprofit organization, and the homeless never get the money. And I think our city council representative should be more accountable for the consequences and more accountable for the actions to the people that are foreign in the service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler, out in Van Nuys.
Good morning, and Mr. Garcetti, I want to set the record straight that you're elected and you're supposed to serve us, not the other way around. And you don't tell people what they say and speak here as long as, of course, it's city business. And this is city business. Prop R was a trick.
Ms. Fogler, if you could address the council in general, please, and we, I assure you, we make sure that all folks can feel welcome and can speak here, so please address that. Thank you.
Please do that. So, Proposition R was a trick, and so was L. So, don't vote on L either, because it's all it is, is all for pay raises for all you city officials, and you want to just help the L.A. U.S.D. to get big pay raises. That's all you want to do. It's on your ballot. You're the one that put it on the ballot. So, obviously, it's a trick. It's all tricks to get the, to take over and then to take away our guns, try to take away our guns, and then you want to be able to take away our property. Look in our U.S. Constitution, you people are not obeying the laws of this country. The U.S. Constitution says the right to liberty, the right to, and the right to property, and we have a right to have liberty and the pursuit of religious rights. We have a right to property, and that was taken out of the U.S. Constitution so that you people can use eminent domain to take away, try to take away people's property. We must not let you do this. We must have control over our development, not letting other people dictate to what development should be done through this big bureaucracy called the CRAs that are nationwide, epidemic, and we must bring it under control to save our country. And our men and women are dying over there for us so that we can just be here and be able to assemble here in peace. I don't want to have any war. I don't want any violence. I want to see us all together here, to get together here and be able to work things out. Okay? I'm going to give you the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that closes our general public comment. If we can run through the, go through the agenda and items called special, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up confirmation of the CAO first, item number 31?
Is there any objection, colleagues, to beginning with the confirmation of the CAO? If not, let's go ahead, and we'll start with that.
And that's item number 31. Public hearing has not been held, and I believe there are cards on it.
All righty. We'll go ahead with the public hearing first on item 31. I do not, okay, here we go. Jim McQuiston, would you like to come forward?
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. We certainly support this. We think Karen has done a terrific job so far. She's listened to everything I've said, so that has to be a plus as far as I'm concerned. And I think we've really got a winner here.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston, and that closes our public comment. All positive, a good start so far. I'd like to ask Assistant to come forward, and I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Parks, to begin the proceedings. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think all of us know Karen not only from her recent move into the position of CAO, but also from her capacity as a member of the financial team at LAX or Lawa. She has moved into the mayor's office, and really, we felt did an outstanding job on the budget last year. We felt that the communication with the mayor's office was outstanding. We got a budget on time. I think also, judging from the comments of those that voted on it in the council, there's a general impression that that budget covered most of our issues very well. Now that she moves into the CAO, she's now got to evaluate the budget she used to prepare. And so, we're going to be working with her over the next couple of months in somewhat of a marathon. Wendy Gruel insists that we work no less than 12 hours a day, and so, we will be going through that. But I think Karen has shown that she's made that adjustment. She's been very objective. The reports that we have gotten certainly give a clear indication of her touch on them. And I think we're going to see, as she's looked through that department, some recommendations and issues that will create change and a different view that she brings to that particular process. The one thing recently that she mentioned to me, which I think is music to all of our ears, is that at times, sometimes we get these very analytical reports, but she said she's taking a move or a step to actually have the CAO's office in a position to be more in a problem-solving mode than just a reporting mode. And I think that's something that we all think will be of great advantage to us. And so, I think that with her background, what she's shown in the interim position and now the permanent position, we should fully endorse her. She's done a great job. We just look forward to it continuing to flourish. And so, I'd recommend that we unanimous vote for her permanent position as a CAO.
Thank you very much. We next have Mr. Reyes, Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Welcome back. But I did want to just rise and show my support for Karen Saisen, and thank her husband for allowing us to spend the time that I think we're going to be having as we go through this process. But I did want to bring up one point, and that is seeing how the federal government right now is in the mode of cutbacks, given that we have significant resources being curtailed that benefit the nonprofit sector of our city and many social services. Our ability to have real-time information and how we move funds to make sure the city can operate, to the degree that you can, can you talk about our need for technology and the direction we need to take in order for us to get to this fluidity of capital as it continues to move through our system?
Yes, Councilmember, I think the, one of the things that the city faces right now is what has been historically an underinvestment in our technology. You will be seeing soon a recommendation to move forward with a contract for the new financial management information system, and that is going to be critical to providing all of us with timely financial data and actually timely costing data so that we can actually give you more complete information upon which to base your decisions. In the meantime, though, we can't wait for that. That's going to take probably about two years to get implemented. We are working very actively, and this was as a result of the infrastructure bonds, in creating a database particularly for capital projects that will identify all of the projects in the city, their funding sources, and where they are in the process, whether they're in design, whether they're in just sort of a concept phase, so we can start to get our hands around what is really a huge program in terms of our capital facilities for government, projects in our parks, wastewater program. We have these, this information in little pockets, but we haven't tied it all together. That's what's been missing, and we're starting an initiative to do that. And I think that will be helpful for the council in terms of making decisions and prioritizing projects.
I look forward to our ability to shape and deliver the information so we can move our resources. I believe we need to emphasize at a much greater level our ability to recycle our own funds back into our neighborhoods, and our capacity to hire youth. Looking at the broad-brush estimates, my understanding is we're close to about $1 billion from City of L.A. funds that goes outside of the county, actually. It equates to about 34,000 jobs. If we can move our capacity so we can see how department heads are actually making decisions and where we move our capital and stimulate the economies of our own neighborhoods, this would be a much stronger city, and we'd be providing opportunities for young folks that speaks to a real issue, which is granting them jobs. So, thank you for your support, and I look forward to working with you as we go through these changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and Karen, just so pleased with this appointment. In fact, I thought we'd already approved you when this came on the agenda in committee and here assumed we had already done the deed of approving your appointment. Just want to add, and I think add to what Mr. Park said as well, we've actually known each other since you were at the CRA, which is many, many years ago. Your breadth of experience, not only in other departments, but also in the mayor's office, I think has made you particularly qualified for this position. I know last year, serving on the Budget Committee, the kind of interaction we had was, I think, important to a budget process that improved upon the mayor's budget, supported the mayor's budget, but made some changes, and you were more than willing, as we were going through and asking some questions for clarification and responsiveness. And I know when someone said, well, now she's moving from being the mayor's budget person to the city's budget person. How will she do? And I said, you know, she is the consummate professional and someone who is going to step into those shoes, difficult shoes to fill, Bill Fugioke. There's only one Bill Fugioke in this world. But I think, Karen, you have really been someone we're going to be able to count on to be able to come up with some creative ideas, and again, not just giving us the answers, but helping us create some of the solutions to some of the problems that we face, and being very aware always of the bottom dollar and making sure we're doing the right thing. So, I would probably speak more eloquently, but I'm sick as you are, so I just wanted to stand up and say how much I'm thrilled that your willingness to accept this position and that today, I'm sure, we'll have a unanimous approval of the role in which I think you were born to fill. So, congratulations, and look forward to working with you even closer. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Cardenas.
Okay, I didn't hear the last part. Thank you. I've really enjoyed working with you, Karen. I had the opportunity of working with you when you were at the airport, and then when I was on the Budget Committee, you started working for the mayor's office handling budget matters. And now, as the interim CAO, we had a wonderful opportunity to actually bring to fruition some activity that the city was engaged in that actually benefited the city tremendously. The reason why I bring that up is because you, of all people, have demonstrated with my interaction with you and the interaction I've seen with my colleagues here on the City Council, that you're a very serious person, you're a very knowledgeable person, yet at the same time, your interaction with us is a very respectful interaction in the sense that you come to us with the best advice you can come up with. And then what happens with that, we either accept that advice, many times we do, and maybe tinker with it a little bit, but by and large, we run with the recommendations you've given us. Yet at the same time, when we engage you, and then we might take something in a different direction, you have demonstrated the ability to work with us and respect the fact that we, the elected members of the city, actually have the ultimate decisions when it comes to these interactions, when it comes to these, the information you give us. And that's one of the things I wanted to let the people of Los Angeles know, that that is the kind of, of interaction and interplay that should be happening with the bureaucratic side of the city, and I don't mean it derogatorily, the bureaucratic side of the city and the elected side of the city. And I don't mean that derogatorial either. But the thing is, the people have elected us to make decisions, and they're constantly pointing fingers at us or accusing us of making the wrong decision or the right decision or what have you, but the bottom line is, we're elected to make decisions in this city. And I just wanted to express how much I appreciate your knowledge, your ability, and your willingness to actually work with us so that we can craft good policy for the city. One of the things I'd like to point out that you helped clarify just last week, and that is that when we work, as Mr. Reyes talked about earlier, when we work with firms that actually hire people in the city of Los Angeles, that benefits us as a whole. And one way in which that benefits us is when we actually receive taxes from that activity. For example, last week, we talked about the firms that actually were able to sell $450 million worth of bonds, basically, and I didn't even realize it at the time, but this is another plus. When we hire, for example, New York firms, they actually assemble the sale of those bonds nine-tenths of the time in New York. This last time, for $450 million in bonds, they assembled the sale here in the city of Los Angeles. I didn't even realize it, but the city of Los Angeles actually taxes the revenue that those firms received at the place in which the sale takes place. So, that was another plus that we didn't even realize at the time, but the fact that you were willing to be open and honest about what took place has really opened the doors and the opportunity for us as policymakers to follow the Charter of the City of Los Angeles, which basically says, in one portion of it, it says, all things being equal, if you have an opportunity to hire firms in the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, or the state of California, you should take that into account in your policymaking decision. That took place last time. I look forward to doing it more and more often, and with your expertise and your ability, I'm sure we're going to be able to get to do it in a way that is established, it's a policy that we can follow, and something that won't cause controversy, but actually will actually do good for the city. So, I'm very excited about your appointment, and I hope and expect that you will get a unanimous vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Rosenthal.
Good morning, Karen.
Good morning.
It's nice to be sitting there and be praised like that. You deserve it. I've had the pleasure of sitting on the Budget Committee and watching you work. You're honest, you have integrity, you're transparent. Two big issues I keep throwing at you that I know you're wrestling with. One is the structural deficit, over $200 million, and we have to focus on that somewhere down the line in terms of pensions and health care and how we balance our budget. The simple story is, we don't take in enough for what we spend out, and you're focusing on that. And the second thing is the zero-based budgeting. The time has come when the city of Los Angeles needs to look at every position it has to see if it's justified. Some can be sunsetted, and new ones can be added based on the tasks at hand in the year 2007. I know with your leadership, with your integrity, with your credibility, not only with the council, but obviously the mayor has appointed you to this position, we as a city are better off. off. Bless you for taking this job and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in enthusiastic support, Karen, of your permanent appointment as our city's administrative officer. And I would like, stricken from the record, Councilmember Reyes' comment that your husband allowed you to serve in this position. I prefer to think that he's supporting you.
Absolutely, as is the testimony.
A woman who's attained the position of the chief administrative officer of the second largest city in the country would need her husband to permission to do this. But nevertheless, I'm glad he's here supporting you. And I really do support you for a number of reasons. One, I think you are in the perfect place at the perfect time as we begin to move forward with the modernization of LAX. You had great experience at the airport. You understand the issues surrounding that, certainly economic engine, as well as the issues surrounding the community. But as we move forward in what I think is critical, as we're trying to retain the business of the major airlines, that we move forward with building the gates behind Todd Bradley International Terminal and building a mid-concourse to support not only the large Airbus planes, but certainly just to keep the international community coming to LAX. So I'm looking to you for leadership in that area as well, because I think that's really critical for tourism and commerce in the city of Los Angeles. And I really also am looking forward to you putting the Office of Charter Schools as a priority. And I know you've already spoken with my office about that. But as we see charter schools cropping up everywhere in Los Angeles, we know that many times, the permitting, the zoning, the building and safety issues are critical, because many of them are going into buildings that were never intended to be a school. And I think the Office of Charter Schools in the city of Los Angeles is critical as we move forward. We don't charter schools, but we certainly are going to be responsible for helping them to open safely, successfully, on a school calendar. And I know you're going to make that a priority, and I appreciate that. And I also want to thank you for, you also sit on the Prop O Committee, and we've been in a lot of discussions with you on the appropriation of those funds, which were voted on by the city of Los Angeles. And you helped put forward the $100 million that the Harbor Regional Park and Lake Machado will receive, which is a critical use of those funds for a treasure in Southern California. So I think you're the perfect choice. I applaud the mayor for seeing your leadership qualities, and you certainly are credible and you have tremendous amount of integrity. And I look forward to working with you as we address the tough issues, as Councilmember Rosendahl talked about, but really put through a lot of issues that make Los Angeles unique. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And to close, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and congratulations on the permanent nomination. And I know that you will sail through swimmingly here today, but I wanted to first add my support, but also, this is a moment when our viewers, Channel 35, our audience here, and folks who are following along through our other media, you know, a lot of people don't know what a city administrative officer does. It's probably the most important bureaucrat that we have in the city. And I say bureaucrat in a positive sense, somebody who is literally the guardian of the budget with her staff in this case. Could you just, and if you could hold my time after questions, could you assess the city's fiscal strength right now and our financial policies and where you would like to see a city administrative officer movement towards that elusive maybe AAA bond rating that I know we've been on the brink of, which is quite difficult, but for the public and understanding of what your vision is for?
Well, I think you don't even have to ask me. You can read the credit reports from objective third parties, Standard and Poor's, Moody's, Fitch Ratings. We are a double-A rated city, which is, you know, one of the highest ratings you can achieve in the municipal bond market. And we do have incredible financial strength, largely due to the diversity of our revenues. We're not dependent on any one revenue source, and that means when we see a downturn in one source, as we are seeing this year in documentary transfer tax, it usually is offset by an uptick in other sources, as we've seen this year in business license tax. And so, on a yearly basis, if we do see declines because of the diversity of our revenue sources, they're usually offset by upticks everywhere. In addition, I think our financial strength is attributed to the discipline the city has shown in reining in expenditures in hard times. You can go back all the way to the '90s when we were suffering the very severe impacts of the aerospace recession in '93 and the decline in property values. The CAO at that time, council members at that time, made the hard decisions to keep, rein in the budgetary expenditures and keep the budget balanced. Where we sit today, the council has recently adopted financial policies that it adheres to strictly and asks for those, for an opinion in each report as to whether the actions in that report are in compliance with those policies. And I can tell you that that is something that is very noticed by the rating agencies, because this is something that the council has done on its own and has taken that step to say, "We're going to abide by a certain set of rules." In terms of moving forward, I think--
Is that unusual at all? I mean, how does that compare to our current cities?
You know, I couldn't really tell you on a city-by-city basis, but it is unusual. It is more common to have what we have as a part of our financial policies, which is a debt management policy. That is much more common. But this policy goes to identifying revenue when you're identifying a new expenditure, and that is a little bit beyond what most cities do. In terms of moving forward, I think there, having had the benefit, unlike many people that assume a new position, I've had the benefit of being in the CAO's office for three months now. Sometimes it seems like, more like three days, and sometimes it seems like three years. But I think there's a couple of goals. One is, I would like to see us assist both the mayor and the council by providing capital planning policies. I think that is one area where the city really needs a little bit more discipline. I think the council and the mayor need a tool for prioritizing projects and for understanding the long-term impacts of decisions. I would also like to see our office work hand-in-hand when we hopefully have a new ITA general manager at looking at technology on a more citywide basis. What happens now is we manage our projects very well within the project itself, whether it's Pacer or it's Public Safety Systems. We manage those projects. We don't always make the citywide linkages. We don't always ask the questions about which systems should be sharing data with each other. And having a more citywide view of technology, working with the new ITA GM, I hope we can leverage the technology investments we have so that all of you have better information to make decisions on. So that's another area I'd like to see our office be assisting in. And then finally, as Councilmember Parks alluded to, I hope that, under my leadership, the office will also be known for problem-solving and innovation. I think we need to go a little bit beyond analytical excellence, which I'm, you know, very proud of the office's reputation in that area, has been carried on by many, all three of the former CAOs. But I'd like us to move more in the direction of innovation and problem-solving.
One of the areas which I point your attention to as well, that we put into the budget a couple of years ago, Bill Fujioka said, "Why don't you put it here?" Because he couldn't think where else to put it, was the grants unit. And one of the things that we often talk about is that we don't do a great job in the city of coordinating our grants and applying for all the grants that are out there. And we'd certainly like to see that, whether it belongs in the CAO's office or not, really get ramped up as well. I think there's been some attention to it, but it's still not done in a very comprehensive way in the city. And I know grants are difficult, so sometimes the time put in isn't worth the energy and the dollars that are brought out. But certainly, when we look at our fair share from Washington and from Sacramento, that's important, too. Do we have a structural deficit?
We do.
In classic terms, we don't carry a deficit over each year, though, do we?
That's correct. We do balance the budget each year, but what we've been doing pretty much for the last four or five years is we have had our regular ongoing revenues, like property tax, like documentary transfer tax, business license, permits and fees. And that brings in a certain amount of growth over the prior year. But we tend to have to look to one-time revenues or one-time bumps in those revenue sources to balance our budget, because our expenditure growth is at a faster rate than our revenue growth. And that's really the underlying problem with our structural deficit.
So we have a planned budget deficit, but not an actual budget deficit by each year's end?
That's correct.
Because we make sure to balance it. I think that's important, because we do need to do the work on the former, but also, I think, sometimes people are left with the impression that we aren't balancing the public's books each year. And not only do we have the requirement to, I mean, we could, I guess, in some ways borrow against, but we do that each year, and it's part of what's reflected in our bond rating, correct?
That's correct.
On housing, I know that we've been able to be very innovative. We've got a great general manager in our housing department who's been able to find ways of ramping up our trust fund. This council has protected those dollars. Mr. Wesson is now the chair of the committee. Before, I was, Ms. Gruel was as well. And I think there is no issue outside of traffic, probably as keenly felt in poll after poll in the last few years, as our housing crisis. We know as well as we're doing these next couple of years from scraping those accounts that we're headed off a cliff in that the $100 million that we're putting aside for the trust fund may, you know, winnow down to something like $20 or $30 million in future years. What are your ideas for us embedding a permanent source of funding for that in a responsible way?
Well, I think the council always has the option during the budget process of appropriating the dollar amounts that it would like to appropriate to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Last year, it was $8 million that went into that trust fund, in addition to the little percentage take from business license tax that goes into it. I will be very honest in that my personal point of view, my personal philosophy, is that earmarking is not always a good thing, because it does take away your financial flexibility when you do have problems to meet, when you have financial problems to meet. That said, the council does have the option of looking at different revenue sources, as it already has done with a portion of the business license tax, and saying, "We want to dedicate a certain percentage." Or you may want to, for example, ensure that a certain percentage of the growth in that revenue source continues to go to the general fund to offset expenditures, but you take a percentage above that growth to put into affordable housing, or for that matter, other priorities. So I think we are going to be very challenged as a city, particularly as we approach the next fiscal year, in meeting even our current service obligations. And so I think it really is incumbent on the mayor and the council to prioritize what are their priorities for expenditure, what do they see as very important to the city's future health and growth. And then, my office looks forward to working with you and accomplishing those goals.
Absolutely. And I very much appreciate the work you've done in that area already. And I think it's easier in some ways to go after something like housing, because it's newer funding, but it, I think, has been very strongly articulated here as essential, as public safety and other things. So, you know, we earmark for cops, we earmark for a whole lot of things, but I know that this council and mayor want to continue that momentum on the housing front. It's just something too many of our constituents feel and that we've done a real model job in the country for. Lastly, in looking at this coming year, if we are faced with the loss of the telephone users' tax, which is a real distinct possibility, $200, what is it, $30 million?
$270 million.
$70 million. So I had another 40 there. $270 million. What would be your plan if that does come down in a negative way towards us? It's probably will come right after the budget. So we're going to be, are we going to be recommending a dual-track budget? Or is it something that when we, you know, reach that bridge, we'll cross it? And what would you recommend if we did?
Well, we certainly don't want to wait till we get to the bridge. What we are in the process of doing now is preparing a budget with the mayor's office. As all of you know, it is the mayor's proposed budget. And we are assuming that we continue receiving our telephone users' tax revenue next year, and that's largely due to the uncertainty surrounding the various legal cases. We just cannot get our arms around timing that would make sense to recommend the frankly draconian service cuts that would be required. Having said that, we don't want to wait till we get to the bridge. So we are also preparing basically a list in various packages of what it would take to bring the budget in balance if that revenue were not available. And so we will be ready with some options, but we are working with the mayor's office on a proposed budget that does not assume that the revenue goes away.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again for your great work at stuff. I know, working for a council and mayor, but we're all getting along very well, and you're a big part of, I think, the reasons why we're able to communicate so well. And we look forward to having a banner year and making your appointment permanent. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. There are no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item 54, and that's confirmation of Carol Baker-Tharp to the, as the general manager of Dunn. And a communication from the chair of EN has been submitted.
All right, Ms. Tharp, would you please come to the middle table? Yes. All right. Why don't we take the public speakers first, and then Ms. Hahn will introduce her. First speaker is Mr. Jim McWhiston, followed by Russell Brown.
Jim McWhiston, East Hollywood Community Association. We have a new general manager, and everyone is looking forward to see what is going to happen with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. One of the disturbing features that I had was the last presentation from the USC group was a four-page slick presentation. It had page one, page two, page three, page two. I don't know who paid for that, but let's hope that the department doesn't take that as a working way to put out things. We do have a lot of problems which are coming up lately. Even last night, we had something which might have amounted to a constitutional tort, or it could have been a RICO action in the department. And so, things are getting to the point where someone is liable to have standing in federal court on the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. I hope it doesn't come to that, and I hope that the new general manager can straighten out things which, in my opinion, are extremely serious right now.
Mr. Brown.
Russell Brown. I'm president of Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council, and previously, I was co-chair of Hollywood United Neighborhood Council. I'm speaking for myself. I very, very much support Carol. Carol and I have worked together for almost four years. She actually sought me out when she was doing her master's thesis, and she was interviewing community leaders and people who'd been involved. She has an extensive leadership background, very much has been involved in the community. She took 70 folks who were community leaders and really helped report to them, sort of doing interviews for her master's thesis, to figure out why people were involved in communities and why they stayed involved and what kept them involved. She has a great education background. As part of this, she really listened, she put it in context, she created a plan, and then she shared that plan. I think the city is really fortunate to have such a partner with us. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker here in City Hall will be Daniel Weisman, and then we'll go to the Valley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, Dr. Tharp, to this part of the city community. Dr. Tharp was before the ENN Committee just a few minutes ago, and it was a pleasure to speak about and to represent the Valley community in support of her candidacy. The crossroads that we're at here are big. The previous neighborhood council, excuse me, the previous Dunn general managers all appeared at the Neighborhood Council Review Commission a few days ago. And the first one, Rosalynn Stewart-Weyman now, said that a stakeholder is anyone who wishes to participate. I hear in the speak, in the speeches that have been made so far and the background that has so far been represented for Dr. Tharp, that she is very interested in getting these communications going. We certainly look forward to that. We certainly look forward to a much better relationship. We certainly look forward to much better relationships between the department, the neighborhood councils, and the individual stakeholders, which are the citizens, the people who live, work, and own property. Welcome, Dr. Tharp.
Now, we'll go to Van Nuys. Our first speaker will be Sharon Brewer, followed by Mr. Zuma Dog.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. My question has to do with 54B and setting a salary for the permanent general manager. I was just wondering whether or not this could be setting a precedent because of whether the other department, the general managers are paid a salary? And if they aren't, then what's going to justify one department having a paid general manager and the rest of them not? So, my concern basically is whether or not the rest of the departments, their general managers are paid. And I think the person that they've chosen hopefully will do a good job, and I saw her at the 9/12 commission meeting. And congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dog. In Van Nuys is our next speaker.
All right. What's up with it though? Los Angeles City Council, Zuma Dog, commenting on item number 54. It's about Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, a new appointee, and I would just like to weigh in. First of all, what is empowerment? It starts at the top. And for this department, it will be Ms. Baker-Tharp. So, I like to say empowerment, what is it? First of all, you need to break down barriers between departments. I took a look at the flow chart for the neighborhood councils, and it's way too complicated. It's like a twisted knot of unaccountability with everything pointing in different directions. So, first of all, you need to simplify the process and create a clear and concise flow chart of accountability and communication, and that's how you can improve the process of accountability. Also, management by fear. I have noticed that in City Hall, there's a prevailing leadership-management style of managing by fear, and fear robs pride and dignity of the workers. So, please empower, do not manage by fear, and you need to break down departments, like I said, and you need to train and educate. Everybody within your department must be, train them to be the boss, train them to be your replacement. That's how you garner respect, that's how you put pride and joy into the environment, and you enable people to be empowered, which means they can make the decisions, they can take answers, they can take action, and they don't have to worry about getting in trouble from the boss because the boss has trained and educated. It's to become a mentor. And those are some of the ways that you can help empower the Empowerment Committee Neighborhood Council. Also, I would recommend an outreach program. That's something that's very important. Like I said, radio, TV, make some campaign flyers. Instead of campaign flyers, say, "Contact your neighborhood council." Emails, call radio, use YouTube, use some of the tools of the trade Zuma Dog has used. To quote Eric Garcetti, "Nobody talks more about the city of Los Angeles than Zuma Dog." Something I'm very proud of, and congratulations and read Dr. Deming to become more empowering.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn will be our first speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support the confirmation of Carol Baker-Tharp as the new general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. We had Carol in my committee earlier, and we probably had about 40 minutes of very good dialogue, questions and answers. And I will tell you, I have known Carol for a long time. Carol was involved with neighborhood councils before we had neighborhood councils. She actually talked about writing a paper in 1996 on trying to get neighborhoods participating in their government. This was obviously a year before the Charter Reform Commission even embarked on their ideas and visions for including neighborhood councils in the new city charter, which was approved in 1999. Carol has been involved in doing the hard community work, but has really also been involved in kind of standing back and taking a good, hard look at our neighborhood councils since their inception, studying them, analyzing them. And I think Carol brings a great perspective to this position as general manager. I believe, as we're going through the 9/12 commission review process, that neighborhood councils are really sort of at a crossroads in the city of Los Angeles. I think we can move forward and really empower neighborhood councils, make them very relevant to what's going on in city government. Or we're going to face a time where volunteers are going to become more and more burned out, frustrated, feeling like it's not really worth it to be involved at the end of the day in improving their neighborhood. So, I'd like for Carol maybe to take just a couple of minutes and talk about, talk about your vision for neighborhood councils, talk about your vision for the department and how you might help us as we cut bureaucratic red tape so that neighborhood councils can do what they're meant to be, to do. And I think the council and the listening audience would be encouraged by your vision and your take on where neighborhood councils are in this critical time in the city of Los Angeles. But know that I wholeheartedly support your confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Councilmember. I think I'd like to say first that it's just an extraordinary privilege to be here, and I appreciate this opportunity. As far as vision for the department, I think everything I say and do, I will strive to have it come under an umbrella of building trust and building strong communication between the department, the neighborhood councils, the city departments, and your offices. Having said that, there are six areas that I feel are important to focus on. The first is balancing support for neighborhood councils from the department with respect for their autonomy, the autonomy that they were given under the charter. Balancing those two things will be critical. That means a lot of listening. Also, gearing the work of the department around focusing volunteer attention on the goals for their neighborhood, not on the process of running the neighborhood councils. I think most people volunteer for neighborhood councils with the idea that they want to get something done in their communities. And when they find that their time is being spent more on the process of making the council itself work than getting something done in their community, it leads to frustration. So, we want to try to find all the ways that we can to remove barriers toward their focusing on the things that got them involved in the first place. That includes providing adequate staffing to free the volunteers really to the highest and best use of their voluntary time. Creating a leadership program that's geared for different levels of need and desire by the neighborhood councils so that there are opportunities for people to go into decision-making well-informed, but also having the kind of skills that they need, the knowledge, the skills, enable them to build the attitudes and behaviors that provide leadership and lively participatory democracy in their own communities. Community asset mapping, I think, will be important. There are pieces of this all over the place, and there's no information in any one place where people can go to say, "Here's what's going on in my neighborhood that I could tap into to bring people from the neighborhood council into conversation with other people who have interests within the neighborhood." And I would propose to spend some time bringing a lot of entities, not only within city government, but in the larger community, together to talk about how we build an asset database for the city that would provide service not only to neighborhood councils, but to others who may need that. And finally, working on not only the enlivening participatory democracy side of the score, but also enabling city departments to do their best job of outreach to the community so that the city departments, your offices, the mayor's office, all reach out to neighborhoods as early as possible in the policy process to engage in conversation about matters that may be six months or a year down the road so that there's an opportunity to bring people together for discussion prior to the time of something being set for a public hearing. And this requires some planning, it requires long lead time, it requires staff in the department to keep up with what's going on in neighborhoods so that they can bring this in a timely fashion to the neighborhoods. With that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Carol. I know my time's up, and there's a lot more. I know we talked--
You have three more minutes, actually, if you need, because it's six minutes as the first speaker.
Oh, because I'm-- Ooh, okay. We talked again about for 40 minutes, and I would encourage council members to make a time where you can really sit down with Carol and talk to her about your concerns and your frustrations as well sometimes with how we can make neighborhood councils relevant. But I will tell you, I made a comment that sort of, "Where are all the neighborhood councils today?" Coming down here, weighing in on this very important decision, and I was told if we were unhappy, we would be packing the chambers. So, I've heard from a lot of neighborhood councils that they're very pleased with your choice, and they look forward to working with you on a very close basis to really empower them to do what they want to do. And I think you're the perfect choice at this time in the city of Los Angeles, so congratulations.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And you kind of, I was going to ask you, what you saw as the first priorities as you go into being the head of this organization and common as Ms. Hahn did. I think you have been passionate about this neighborhood council system for a long time from your days at CORO and at USC and all that you have been doing and studying and following it. So, it's kind of a natural that you would apply and be accepted in this position. So, we're thrilled with this opportunity. And I think you're right that we are looking towards those neighborhood councils to move past just the process and really about how they can be effective, not only in their advisory, but in how to get things done in their neighborhoods. And we see, you know, really from all levels of people who are still focused on the process and those that are actually doing things in their neighborhoods and working with some of the other neighborhood councils. So, I think we're anxious to see also what we can as a city council, how we can implement, when those recommendations come from the 9/12 commission, where we can provide the assistance within your department. I know one of the concerns had been, and if you could comment on, which is that a lot of the staff that were originally hired were hired to kind of get people through the process, and whether or not there's been enough training for the staff that are in Dunn to help move these neighborhood councils to the next level and what your, again, you haven't really officially started yet, but in your kind of review and so forth. Then just hold my time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have not talked directly with staff yet. However, I understand that some new training has been put in place fairly recently for staff. As you know, training is one of the areas where I've spent a lot of time, and certainly helping staff to have the sense that relationship-building and communication, clear--
Hold my time.
--responsive communication will be important.
Eric, you hold my time? Sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Making sure that there's a sense of responsiveness and eagerness to serve communities, I think, will be part of that assessment.
And again, I think that as we've seen, and I don't know, turnover and the kind of staff that, I'd be interested as you get into being the new director there to kind of give us a status report on how that's worked, because again, it's critically important, that relationship between the staff and the neighborhood council, the ability to be responsive and to understand some of the complexities. I think we've heard over the years the challenges with not standardized whether election procedures or stakeholders. And again, the nice thing is you're going to have a 9/12 commission that is going to come forward with some recommendations that will help get us to that next level and to have, I think, a better relationship between the city and our neighborhood councils because they're a wonderful asset. The other issue that has always been of concern to me is the outreach efforts and how to ensure that we go beyond, and this is not in a negative term, but the usual suspects. You know, we have the same people who are involved all the time, and how do we reach out to people who otherwise would not engage in their civic kinds of activities and where we can do that, and particularly in some of the diverse neighborhoods of Los Angeles. They may be in other organizations, it may be that the neighborhood council isn't meeting at the right times and so forth. So, I think that would be a top priority for me is to see how Dunn can play a role in reaching out to underserved communities or underrepresented communities on some of these neighborhood councils. And also particularly the youth. We still don't have a large population of young people who are getting involved in our neighborhood councils, which I think is critically important.
I agree with you that not only outreach, but organizing in communities is going to be critical and that there's perhaps a lot more the department can do to assist. Again, when you've got people who are all volunteers working, they need to balance the time that they spend between staying focused on their goals and being out in the community. So, I think that the department can organize itself to do a lot more, not only city-wide awareness building about neighborhood councils, but also actual community connection making. Once we talk with neighborhood councils about what they want to achieve, then to make sure they are meeting and having conversations with the people in their communities who share those interests and concerns, I think, will be important. So, it's a lot about building bridges, making introductions, creating communication, not just relying on press releases and flyers and so forth.
And I think, as my last comment, is in relation to planning issues. I know that a large percentage of time spent by our neighborhood councils is on planning issues, the land use committees, design advisory committees, some of the names in my district, and the importance of training our neighborhood councils on the issues around planning and how Dunn can help be a catalyst in that way as well to provide citywide or even, you know, taking APC areas and providing that kind of expertise and knowledge to our neighborhood councils. So, going into the process, they have a foundation. And I know it takes time, it takes time for those of us that are elected officials to learn all of the rules and what things we can affect and what ones we cannot. But I think that also should be a top priority of Dunn is providing that kind of training and information to all of our neighborhood councils. So, I'll add that to your list of to-dos.
The, I feel fortunate that the planning department now has a great reputation for having undertaken some of these changes as well. So, I believe there will be a good partnership there, and I would strive to have that kind of partnership with all of the city departments so that the neighborhood councils can get the information, the education that they need going into any public discussion to be well-informed members of the conversation.
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with you for a long time, so I'm just thrilled that you're going to be officially part of the city family and look forward to you digging in and coming out towards our neighborhood councils. I'll offer publicly here for you to come out and maybe meet with the leadership of our neighborhood councils in my district to kind of talk about ways in which we can work together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that you got your PhD on doing a dissertation on neighborhood councils.
Yes, sir.
What did you learn in that experience when you did that?
Well, my degree is actually an interfield in political science and ethics. I was asking questions about who gets involved and why they get involved. And of course, I was looking at the very startup phase, so these were the people that were helping to begin the system. Who gets involved? The question was, is it bringing in anyone new into the early part? And the short answer is, not too much. The folks who were getting involved in the early phase were people who've been in their, active in their communities, perhaps not in government, but in their communities for a very long time. The second question was, why are people getting involved? Is there some sense of common good, or is it all just what the economists would say, self-interested involvement? And the answer there was much happier for me because I found that because people generally who were participating had been involved for a long time, they had been involved long enough to understand that their personal interests are connected to the larger interest, which is exactly what Jefferson and Russo and people like that who wrote about democracy predicted.
Right.
You get involved because of a problem in your backyard, and the longer you stay involved, the bigger your backyard gets. And so, I think that one of the things that will be important-- And so I think that one of the things that will be important, and the learning that I took away from that, was that we need to help people come into the system who have not been involved in such a long time. And that means they're probably going to be more self-interested when they first come in, and we have to figure out how to make it an enjoyable enough and productive enough experience for them that they want to stick around once they come in.
Very good. I really see the challenge ahead. Would you define a stakeholder from your perspective of who should be a stakeholder in this?
Well, the stakeholder actually is defined in the Charter Amendment, and it's very broadly defined, and I must say I agree with that, because we are not talking here about representative democracy at the neighborhood level. We have the city council for that. What we're talking about is participatory democracy, where we're not talking so much about one side winning and another side losing, as we're talking about people being able to get in and roll up their sleeves and do locally-based problem solving, and to debate with one another about what's good for their community. In that kind of situation, having anyone who cares enough to turn out to talk about what's good for their community is a good thing, in my opinion.
In theory, but in some neighborhood councils, special interest groups fill buses with people and give a slate and take over councils. How do we deal with that kind of an issue?
Well, you know, I've seen a couple of situations that have been characterized that way. Maybe the bus carries twenty, thirty, forty, maybe even fifty people, and yet it's a community that might have thirty thousand people, it's a community that might have seventy thousand people. There are a lot of other interests who could be at the table, and part of democracy has to do with showing up.
There's been a discussion, a robust discussion about council files. What's your take on that, of them having the ability to pick an issue, where a group of councils getting together and agreeing on an issue and wanting to start something called a council file, which starts a process within the government?
Well, as I understand it, and I won't claim to understand the entire process of council files, but as I understand it, I don't believe there's a lot to be lost in allowing it, because the council has the prerogative to engage it or not engage it. And so allowing it to be brought forward is another way of doing what you do here every day, which is listening to people who bring matters before you.
Well said. Renters versus homeowners. I go to more homeowner meetings than anything else, and the room is packed. People who own their home have a sense of tremendous concern about their neighborhood. Renters are difficult to get into neighborhood councils and to get into other community groups. How would we make an appeal to renters to be part of this?
You've hit on a huge issue, because in Los Angeles, we have about two-thirds of our population who are renters versus a third who are homeowners. And fifty years of empirical research says that the homeowners are the ones who are more likely to participate. I believe that figuring out what those folk who live in the apartments care about, and talking with them about matters that they care about, is going to be a better way to approach getting them involved than to simply invite them to a meeting. It's going to take person-to-person communication.
Thank you very much for stepping forward to this. We look forward to your leadership at neighborhood councils.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes is next.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate this dialogue. I was writing down some of your responses, and we talk about participatory democracy. As you were saying, anyone who cares enough will participate. Part of democracy has to deal with showing up, and this exchange right now about two-thirds of the city being renters, one-third being homeowners. The notion of leisure is a very real notion for the folks who can afford it. And so as renters, at least in my district, and I say this all the time, I'm at forty thousand people per square mile. Half of my district is at or below poverty. I would say half of the city is in that condition. We're talking about its economics, its economic profile. So the challenge, I think, before us, as you have stated, is what brings folks to the table? When you are carrying two or three jobs, when you don't have childcare, when you have the whole line of issues and the pressures that poverty creates in terms of environment and the ability to participate. One challenge I'd like to set before you is finding ways in which folks are already participating in their quest to improve themselves. For example, English is a second language. You have thousands and thousands of adults learning English. In my district, Evans Adult, there was a time when they were offering classes at four, five, six in the morning. People would show up to learn English, but they weren't showing up to the community meetings because that was a higher cost, given what commitments they already had. So right now, we're talking to some University of California professors to see if they could create a curriculum so that as they're learning ESL, they're learning about public participation, they are learning about environmental impact reports, what a community meeting, an official EIR meeting, means, what an actual neighborhood council session discussing a certain development, what would that require? And they're actually trying to figure out how to put it into their ESL curriculum. Now, if we could blend that, I think you will have a higher level of participation and a greater presence of a real democratic process, because those who are excluded because of economic pressures can engage within those venues in which they're already making sacrifices to attend. And so I'm asking you, is that a direction you see this department going in, in trying to leverage those types of opportunities?
I think that's a wonderful idea of how to proceed. I would include young people in high school civics classes. One of the things I know is that, starting, I believe it's this year or next year, all students in high school in California will have to have a service learning component while they're in high school in order to graduate. This is an opportunity for us to work with the teachers who are creating these service learning opportunities for their students, to place students actually in neighborhood councils as a way for them to achieve their requirement for high school graduation. And if we can be creative to find those avenues, as you've pointed out, where people are already engaged in something that's vitally important to their lives, and make the neighborhood council process and involvement in local government part of that thing that is so necessary to their personal life, I believe that's how we will engage folks.
And just my last point, if we could layer in, I know we have to keep a separation between church and state, but the fact is, a strong social component of many of the folks are in church-type arenas and gathering points. I just want to throw that out there as another way of doing this. Quite frankly, I've been rather distant from neighborhood council, only because I wanted to make sure that the genuine leadership can surface without political influence. I think we're at a point where we need to engage it more so we can solidify that structure and create a more meaningful input. And I believe it was the study from USC that gave us a real eye-opening conclusion as to who really is participating versus who needs to participate. So I appreciate all your hard work and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you and your office.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. That's our last speaker on the queue. So with that, let's go ahead and make this official. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If there's no objection, colleagues, Ms. Hahn asked for item seventeen out of order. Is there any objection? If not, we'll take up item seventeen, and Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think we might have some cards from members of the public on this, but colleagues, what's before us here, and I want to thank the people that have come all the way from San Pedro and have been sitting here now for almost two hours, to comment on this item. What we have before us today is funding for a new arts and entertainment district in downtown San Pedro, which was the vision of James Allen, who's a resident of San Pedro and a vice chair of our Pacific Corridor Community Advisory Committee, as well as publisher and editor of the Random Links newspaper. And this ACE District has been embraced both by our CAC and our San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, and I know Camilla Townsend Colesal is here, Colesal Townsend, Camilla Townsend, is here to support it. And the basic premise is to create new ordinances that will permit sidewalk dining, live entertainment zones, and areas that will nurture our artist community. And the funding that we're going to approve today will go directly to the Chamber of Commerce to allow them to hire consultants who will create the ACE District Development Plan, its budget, its timeline. And this is really important, and many of you know it's been one of my goals since I was elected in 2001, to completely revitalize downtown San Pedro. And it really is going through a renaissance right now. We have about thirteen hundred units of housing being built right in downtown San Pedro. And when the Urban Land Institute came out here in 2002, they studied San Pedro to tell us how we might revitalize and have a renaissance of downtown San Pedro. They told us to capture our waterfront as a part of our plans, but they also said that one of our great assets and treasures was our vibrant arts community. And many people are concerned every time there is a redevelopment of a downtown urban environment, that what happens sometimes is our artist community gets left behind, and the art galleries become something that is not nurtured and preserved. So what this does is also help to preserve and cherish our artists and our galleries in downtown San Pedro. So moving forward with this ACE District will allow us to create a plan to not only continue to revitalize our downtown area in San Pedro, but also to protect, to preserve, and to nurture the very art institutions that we think makes San Pedro a unique part of Los Angeles. So colleagues, I ask you to give me an I-vote on this. Let's support this unanimously to move forward with really creating San Pedro in the way that many people have envisioned this town for a long time. So I would love to have your support. I know we have members that have come from San Pedro who would like to speak on this item. Maybe we can have that now.
We'd like to reopen. There's one card, and we've held the public hearing, so you want to open it?
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't, no objection. They've come a long way.
Camilla Townsend.
Yeah, I know. Yes, when's our video conferencing for San Pedro? Right here at the podium. Camilla Townsend.
You'd think I'd know by now how to find this, then. Anyway, good morning, and thank you, President Garcetti, and Councilwoman Hahn, and all the esteemed council people here for allowing us to speak. I'm here today to urge you to support the formation of an arts and entertainment district in San Pedro. This means authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Community Redevelopment Agency and the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce. For over a hundred years, the chamber has been at the forefront of supporting local business and all that is great about San Pedro. In 2002, as our councilwoman referred to already, the chamber partially funded an Urban Land Institute study that recommended that several thousand new market rate residential units be built in San Pedro to anchor the local economy before revitalization of the retail commercial districts is undertaken. Now, that long-awaited renaissance is truly happening in San Pedro, and it's our time to turn our mutual attention to create an arts and entertainment district, to improve the struggling commercial retail district, provide overdue support for our artists and cultural institutions, and encourage entertainment-related businesses to locate in our downtown. The ACE District is viewed by our community as the best strategy to preserve and sustain San Pedro's arts and cultural institutions. The Chamber of Commerce promises to conduct outreach to secure the best consultant team to guide the formation of this district, and will use its contacts within the business and arts communities to ensure success. We are very proud to join with Councilwoman Hahn, the Pacific Corridor Community Advisory Committee, and the Community Redevelopment Agency in working together on this important and historic effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have one other speaker, James Preston Allen. Welcome, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, President Garcetti, council members. I am here to support the item number seventeen for the amount of $75,000 to support the ACE Arts Cultural and Entertainment District in San Pedro, as explained by the previous speakers. What is universally accepted and understood within the education community is that the arts have a fundamental role in expanding the minds of young people in our schools. What is less understood is the role of the arts within the community. I know Ms. Perry is looking at doing a similar type of thing with Central Avenue. I've visited with the folks up at Watts Towers and see the impact that the arts have on that community there. The idea of creating an arts and entertainment district within the confines of a business district, I think, is a bit unique, but it is not totally unique in terms of what has happened across this country. There are examples that have happened in other places. So we're not breaking totally new ground here, but I think that we are using this money as seed money that will return to the city of Los Angeles in ways that will be perhaps unexpected. I think the importance here is that as the mayor is out fighting gangs and graffiti, I think that in San Pedro, we can start with this seed money to redirect the energies of our youth, the energies of our artists, and to create a community that is creative, talented, and will bring and attract the right energies to our town and to revitalize San Pedro. I think it can be a model for other districts within the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is our last public speaker.
Thank you. Well, and again, I appreciate those who've come from San Pedro to speak today. This is a great opportunity to partner with the Chamber of Commerce and to really move forward on our tremendous revitalization and our renaissance of downtown San Pedro. I will tell you, colleagues, this has been such a great process from the very first time we had the Urban Land Institute come and lay out a roadmap or a blueprint, and I'm really pleased to say we're taking that seriously, we're following it, and it's a great partnership between government, the chamber, the community, to really create the kind of downtown that, as James Allen said, we believe will actually be a model for other downtowns in Los Angeles. So thank you for your support on this today, colleagues.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Item seven, which we'd already voted on, we mistakenly thought one of the cards for seventeen was seven, so that will go forward, and let's take the next item, please.
Mr. President, I understand council received some cards after items were already considered and adopted from Van Nuys. I have thirty-two, thirty-seven, and forty-six.
Yes, Mr. Dog waved thirty-two and thirty-seven, said that he wanted to speak on forty-six, forty-eight, and fifty-four, as we heard. So if we can just reconsider forty-six to add that to the queue. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we'll call that special for cards. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number twelve, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Number twelve, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the city staff to come up, please. Our colleagues, while they're coming up, basically, this item was heard in budget and finance, and as we've all seen on, over time, different audits reflect, often people have not paid their city business tax, and often there's a period in which we recover them, and then there's a penalty and things of that nature, and we find different ways to maybe forgive them a part of that penalty. This is a little different. We had a company that actually was paying their business tax twice. The home office and the local office was paying it to a tune of about $1.2 million over what they should have paid. The city has a rule that says you can't get a recovery except for within a one-year period of time if you should notify us. If we follow that rule, then roughly about $900,000 If we follow that rule, then roughly about $900,000, close to $1 million, we'd actually just tell that business, "We're sorry, you forfeited it." We asked the Department of Finance to think about that and come back at council and see if there was a better way to handle this so that we're just not telling the business that you've lost a million dollars because you've overpaid us, but that possibly if we can't give them back funds within a period of over a year, can we give them credit in years to come. And so I just wanted to set that up as why this is before you. Normally, on these issues, they go through on consent, but this is a very unique situation. Let me ask staff to let us know what they've come up with.
Thank you. June Ulrich with Office of Finance. I think there may have been some confusion when we were in committee. It is a one-year period that we can refund them the cash, but there is a three-year period that we can apply a credit towards other liabilities.
Yes, sir.
So even though they had $1.2 million in duplicate payments, we're able to refund approximately $300,000 of that, and approximately $880,000 of that is being applied to other liabilities. So they're really only out around $30,000 that was out of statute.
Okay. Are they much more pleased with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'd ask that, colleagues, that we would endorse this new settlement in which we would give them credit over the next three years for their overpayment versus just telling them that they were only forthcoming approximately $300,000 because it was caught in the first year. And that way, I think we've done a fair job to a person, or an organization, and a business that seemed to be so diligent that they were paying their taxes twice. And so that's what I would recommend, that we go forward on this recommendation, amend the Budget and Finance Report with this recommendation, and move forward on that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do know that this body has done a lot of work in trying to streamline and make it more efficient, but thank Councilmember Parks for this opportunity. But such a huge city, so many businesses, we found one. What's the probability of others being in this situation? Is it their own sense of interpretation of the law? Or is it because they don't want to fight City Hall, they always lose? I mean, can you describe, do we have ways of being fair?
Well, we do have random audits of taxpayers. So oftentimes, in an audit, we don't necessarily find that they're liable for more tax. We may find that they've overpaid, and it actually results in a refund, or it results in no liability or no refund, one way or the other. It is a self-reporting tax, so it is incumbent on the taxpayer to know what it is they are remitting to the city.
But if there was a discussion about how small and medium-sized businesses felt that they were being penalized because they were paying twice, because they're working from home, and they might have another business. So the rule is, if you are a business, whether you work from home or outside of the home, you only have to pay once?
You just need to pay on what, for instance, if it's business tax, it's based on gross receipts. So it's whatever your gross receipts are that you have earned in your business, and that is the basis for your tax.
Okay. I just want to make sure folks who are listening understand that. We're not trying to gouge folks, but this is the law, and it's a good example of how we caught something and made things fair. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay. Ms. Hahn, item number 25.
Colleagues, this is a resolution in support of a bill by Merv Dymo Lee to have hundreds of thousands of dollars committed to gang prevention programs. But specifically, this bill talks about gang prevention programs, interestingly enough, in Compton, Inglewood, and Oakland. And as you know, we're moving forward in the city for the first time, really doing kind of a comprehensive strategy to end gang violence in Los Angeles. And we want to have the state as a partner. We want to have the federal government as a partner. So I would like to get your support that we support this bill, if it's amended, to include funding for anti-gang programs in the LAUSD. I think that makes sense for us as a city to move forward on our strategy to end gang violence. There are already prevention programs that we know work. Some of them are already in LA Unified School District. So I would just ask that we have a voice on this, but say we would like these dollars to also fund anti-gang programs in LA Unified School District. So I hope I can have your support that we will support this if amended.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly agree with you, Ms. Hahn, on this. I met with Superintendent Brewer yesterday, frankly, which I think he's very smart and gets out there, wanted to meet with the council member. We talked about issues in the 11th District, including Augustine Contreras, who was gunned down in the parking lot at Venice High School, and about various gang intervention programs. We're actually looking at one of my middle schools, which is sort of a, you know, the young kids, as they almost become gang members. And I don't want to mention the school, but we're looking at ways in which we can make it a better environment for young people. So obviously, we've got to tie education into the government here, as well as the whole gang strategy. Hats off, Ms. Hahn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Prepare the roll, please, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Item 26, called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, item 26.
I just wanted to have a roll call vote on this. Let her vote.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 36, called special for cards from the public.
Okay. We've got two cards for item 36. Alex, I'm sorry, Ku? Alex Ku? Alex, can't quite read this handwriting here. Is there a public speaker for item 36? First name Alex? Nope? Okay. Reza Shatie? Nope? Okay. We'll close the public hearing on that. Please open the roll.
Okay.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Okay. Next item, please.
Item 46, called special for cards from the public.
All right. We've got item 46. Zuma Dogg, out in Van Nuys.
Already. That took place on February 5th, so I'll pass that one.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody wishing to be heard in council on this? If not, go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 48, called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Our first speaker is Sharon Brewer on item 48, out in Van Nuys.
She left.
Okay. Our second speaker is Zuma Dogg.
Yeah, yeah, item 48, man, I ain't gonna waive that one. It's Jack Weiss. He wants to spend money to put up banners for the Olympics in 2016. First of all, it don't say how much we gonna spend. Secondly, I say we need to spend banners to encourage the LA Olympic Committee to come here and not give us the Olympics. Please, LA Olympic, please, Olympic Committee, do not give LA Olympics. Do not spend money on these banners. We cannot accommodate the infrastructure. The side streets can't handle it. We can't handle the police. Can you imagine by 2016, the nightmare that the city's gonna be? There's no, don't make the city look bad. Please do not put up these banners to say, "Let's get people," you know, the Olympic Committee. No, 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 no. Don't waste money on that. Maybe you want to do some banners instead of this money, since we now know we can't have the Olympics because we don't have the side streets, we don't have the police, we don't have the highways. It'll cause terrible gridlock. The city will be out of control. It's not like the '80s, you know? I want to go back to the '80s, to the high school deaths, you know? We'd like to go back to the good old '80s. It ain't the good old '80s anymore. It's gonna be the terrible 2016s, y'all. So don't waste money for these banners. Put it for LAUSD. Put it for youth programs. Put it for neighborhood council, community outreach. Please say no to the ridiculous notion, "It would be nice to have the Olympics." You know what? I'd like to be a Chippendale dancer, but I don't got the proper infrastructure. The city of Los Angeles wants the Olympics, but they don't got the proper infrastructure. So I'll waive the rest of my time, but remember, please say no to spending money on banners for the Olympics when the city shouldn't be having the Olympics. We got too many basic needs that we cannot accommodate at this point, and we need to focus on the basics. Let's get the city restorated. Let's take care of the trash removal, the waste, the police, the schools. And we just have too much on our plate to bring all these millions of people, to clog up the highways, to shut down the city, when we don't got the police. Say no to these wasteful banners. Sorry, Jack Weiss. Zuma Dogg for City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dogg. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President, and we'll have to take your word on your infrastructure, Mr. Dogg. I wanted to just stand and thank Mr. Weiss for doing this, but I think it was appropriate also for us to speak to the importance, not only of these banners, but I know if Mr. LeBonde was here, he'd be giving this speech, so I'll just very quickly emphasize how excited we are about the possibility of having the Olympics here in Los Angeles. And many people around this horseshoe have been working very hard on the possibility of not only bringing back the Olympics in 2016, but bringing back what happened, the most successful, most profitable Olympics we've ever seen, a reduction in traffic. A lot of people said, "Just bring back the Olympics for that, if we can get one-way streets finally again on Olympic Boulevard in Pico." But more importantly, to showcase what an international city we have, what an amazing asset. This is not just an American town, it's a great world town. And since Australasia has had two, or will have had two, Summer Games with Sydney and Beijing, and Europe will have had it twice with Athens and London, it's time that it comes back to the Americas. Canada will have the Winter Olympics two years before this, so they're not in the hunt. Mexico has not expressed too much interest, and Brazil will be holding the Americas Cup at the same time, so probably can't do both. That positions the United States in a great place to get the Olympics, and if you have to pick one town in the U.S., it is LA. So thanks for helping with the team that's here and making sure that they see just how enthusiastic. And I know that Mr. Sanders would have said that the poll showed that close to 90% of Angelenos want this, and so let's do all we can to get it here, and this is a great way of doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick second to thank UCLA, which last week played a major role with the delegation that came on the Olympics and showed the facility and where the athletes would stay, and our mayor for organizing all kinds of things, and Barry Sanders especially for the leadership he's put forward with it. It's between us and Chicago, and I know we're gonna take it on because, as Eric just said, we are the microcosm of the Earth, we're the blender of the planet. We have large numbers of every ethnic group from all over the Earth, over 100 different languages. So when they come to Los Angeles, they're actually coming home to the most international city in the nation, and I hope we do get it in the year 2016. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk. Councilmember Brewer requests to be excused Friday, March 16th, to leave at 10:30 for city business that meets council policy.
She's excused.
And Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Friday, March 16th, for city business that also meets council policy.
He is excused as well.
And that clears the desk.
Now it's time for announcements. Colleagues, I wanted to share with our viewers the new Neighborhood Services Guide for the city of Los Angeles, which is available through any of your council offices. I know that each of our offices has hundreds of these guides, which are informative details of not only our elected officials, but also has service numbers for many of the most important departments in the city. So if folks are interested in getting this, please contact your city council member. It's a beautiful guide to all of the city services, and we commend that to you. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, I have a couple announcements. In the 8th District, the monthly Urban Issues Breakfast Forum of Greater Los Angeles will hold its monthly meeting this month, subject protecting women and children. And the 8th District Genesee Center will be part of the participants. Also, a person who's been a spokesperson for the Genesee Center Academy Award actress, Halle Berry, will also be a part of this, and this is Friday, March 9th, at the California African-American Museum in Exposition Park. And then also, an annual event with the National Alumni Association of Spelman College, the LA chapter, will be holding its event on Sunday, March 11th, at the Omni Hotel Downtown LA. And then also, a La Merck Park event at our world-famous Lucy Florence Restaurant will be holding the event on Sunday, March 18th, and it would be a concert, satin dolls with Phyllis Battles as the main performer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Other announcements, colleagues? Not, if I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. With great sadness, I announce the passing of James Lockhart, who passed away on February 23rd, 2007, from respiratory complications. Mr. James Lockhart was a longtime city employee for over 37 years, starting his career in 1969 as a computer operator working for the Information Technology Agency's data center. James was an active employee of the city when he passed away on February 23rd, 2007. During his career in the Enterprise Network Operations Division, James ensured thousands of cities' payroll checks. Direct deposit slips and special forms, such as electronic forms, are printed in a timely and accurate manner. He was an excellent teacher who gave specific and detailed instructions when training colleagues on printing. James was especially conscientious about staff covering in the data center to assure that printing was completed on time. James was eager to serve our customers and to help anyone that needed assistance. He would follow through on customers' problem until it was addressed to their satisfaction. His unselfish attitude, pleasant demeanor, and professional dedication will not be forgotten. Every city employee has been serviced and been touched by his dedication when receiving their payroll check or direct deposit slip. Mr. James Lockhart will be truly missed. He is survived by his wife Cynthia Sheldon Lockhart, his mother Pearl Lockhart, his son Troy Lockhart, and granddaughter Charmaine Lockhart. May rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Brewer.
Thank you, and I know Mr. Rosendahl wants to as well adjourn in memory of someone many of us knew over the years, Bob Hattoy. And there was an extraordinary obituary today in the LA Times, known him for over 20 years. And as it said, he was brutally witty, and we all knew him from his time where he stood up at the Democratic Convention in 1992 and really brought a face to the AIDS crisis, and sometimes hit you like a bat to tell you exactly what was needed and how important it was. But he also was known for being an environmentalist in the Sierra Club in the state of California and was an individual who spoke out. And I want to, there were several emails going back in the last couple of days from friends, and one that I received this morning was from Warner Shabat, Felicia Marx's husband, many of you may know. And I thought his last sentence here was, "He combined courage, humor, political savvy, passion for the environment and people, in a wonderful, bizarre, ethical, eclectic, outrageous, and fun package." And I think when you read that obituary, you see what a difference he made in so many of our lives and people who did not have a voice. I also, you know, found that, as you see in the last page of the obituary, the comments that he asked, "Is ashes be preserved in a martini glass?" That's so Bob. And I saw him a few months ago, and he was as excited and hands and arms moving, those of you that knew him, was very expressive in the issues that he was dealing with. And as someone that, I was shocked to get the call Sunday, letting me know that he had passed away early that morning. I think there's a lot of people in this country that are celebrating his life, and as Bill and I were talking about, you know, you forget, I mean, he was diagnosed many, many years ago, and people thought he wouldn't live. And in fact, he outlived so many individuals that we thought that we would have him around for a long time, for him to give us a hard time and to speak out on so many important issues. And so I just wanted to join with Bill and so many people across this country. I think he wants four parties, he said, across the country. Again, very Bob, wanting to make sure that we all celebrated his life, so he will be missed by so many of us.
Is that my name?
Yeah. And Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, last time I saw Bob, we hugged, and we agreed we were gonna have lunch. We laughed, we talked about a lot of different things. I've known him for a long time, and just indulge me for a second, as I say, Bob died over the weekend in Sacramento. He first rose to prominence in 1992 as the first openly gay person ever to address the National Convention of a political party. Speaking from the podium at the Democratic National Convention in New York, Bob moved the country by speaking of his diagnosis as an HIV-positive individual. And at the time, my partner Christopher Lee Blauman, just hanging by a thread... And at the time, my partner Christopher Lee Blauman, just hanging by a thread, and all of us who lost so many people, saw Bob up there as a symbol for all of us that we can be respected and treated with respect and dignity. He served as a political appointee in both the Clinton administration and the first Clinton administration. Bob Hattoy was reassigned to the Department of Interior from a prominent position in the White House shortly after he publicly criticized President Clinton for his newly adopted "Don't Ask, Don't Tell, Don't Pursue" policy regarding gays in the military, which, of course, many of us think is an outrageous discrimination against our people. And he continued, though, in a personal relationship with the Clintons. He took other assignments. You know, he started around this horseshoe. He worked for Zev Yarzlosky, who was then a council member from the fifth district, and he served as a consultant to numerous political campaigns. He was an environmental activist and is a delegate to several Democratic conventions. He was also an active member of the National Stonewall Democrats. We're all gonna miss him. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. I'd like to add my name as well. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I received this email this morning from Christine Yamazaki, who is the executive director of the Go For Broke Foundation, and it's with great sadness that I would like to inform those who are listening that Ted O'Hira, member of the Four Forty-Second Age Company and Board of Director for the Go For Broke Foundation, passed away yesterday due to a heart attack. He was very active with the organization and was in the office on a weekly basis. His involvement started with the construction of the Go For Broke Monument and continued with educational efforts specifically to rally other veterans to give their oral histories. He was a mentor and spoke to many students visiting the Go For Broke Monument, and he was a dedicated docent. He will be most remembered for his passion for singing, and most recently at the MIS Shinnengai and at last year's evening of Aloha Annual Dinner, which I was able to attend, and I can tell you, the presentation of the veterans that evening was extremely moving. Christine notes that his passing is devastating to staff and the other veterans, and they are just grateful that he did not pass away in pain. Please keep him in your prayers, and to his wife as well, she's, and his family members. And I'll be joining them soon, as soon as I get the funeral details and we'll get more specifics, but I tell you, they're an inspiring group of men, and the Go For Broke Foundation has preserved our American history to the benefit of all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Rosendahl.
I just have two other adjourning motions. One is for Tom Eagleton, the former U.S. Senator from Missouri, who was forced to withdraw as a Democratic Party vice presidential nominee in nineteen seventy-two. I knew Tom quite well at that time, and if there was anything good about all of that, it was at least shedding light on mental illness and that people need to be treated, and treated as any other person who was sick. In the Senate, Eagleton distinguished himself with this concern for the environment. He was one of the principal sponsors of the Clean Act of nineteen seventy and the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two. Eagleton was also a key Senate proponent of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to improve educational opportunities for children with disabilities. Eagleton had written three books, and most notably, War and Presidential Power, a chronicle of congressional surrender in nineteen seventy-four. After seeking not to go to reelection, he got involved in all kinds of civic activities in his home state. He's survived by his wife of fifty-one years, Barbara, and two children, a brother and three grandchildren. One more adjourning motion, Mr. President. Teresa Resto, a longtime resident of Ventura, passed away at the age of fifty-two on Friday, February twenty-third, two thousand and seven, of complications from breast cancer. She's survived by her loving daughters Autumn and Brennan and her sister Cindy and many friends, including our own LA City Views, Tony Agani. Terry was heavily involved in work involving care for foster children, and she was the most generous and loving person anyone could meet. Her laughter was infectious, and her joyful life was never stifled. She will be greatly missed. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. For Mr. Zein, he asks that we adjourn two adjourning motions today. One is Jesus Samuel Passos Jr., who's a Los Angeles Fire Department firefighter. He died March fourth after an off-duty single car accident, in which his vehicle struck a telephone pole and a light pole at the intersection of Baltar and Sausalito in Council District Three. He was born May twenty-first, nineteen eighty. Jesus, or Jesse, as he was nicknamed, was only twenty-six years old. His appointment date to LAFD was April fourteenth, two thousand and three, and he served in Fire Station Seventy-three on Reseda Boulevard in the San Fernando Valley for approximately eighteen months. His father is Captain Jesse Passos, who serves at Fire Station One-O-Five, also in the same battalion, and one of his sisters is a PSR assigned to Valley Communications with LAPD. The family grieves for their loss of their only son. He will be lovingly remembered by his father, Captain Jesse Passos, and his mother, Eloisa, who are residents of West Hills, sisters Rosalia, Juliette, and Maricela. Services will most likely be at Saint Bernadine's later this week or early next week, and I know our entire council adjourns in his memory and sends our best thoughts to the entire family at this trying time. Second, for Mr. Zein, he asks that we adjourn for Mrs. Mary Inola Robertson, who passed away February twenty-eighth, two thousand and seven, at the age of eighty-three. She was born on April twenty-second, nineteen twenty-three, in Saint Martinville, Louisiana. She's the mother of General Services Police Officer Michael Robertson, who works the security post for the mayor's office. He is, sorry, she is survived by four sons, Philip Junior, Michael, Frankie, and Ronald, and two daughters, Diane Cho and Elizabeth Eckard. As well, she has numerous nieces and nephews. May she rest in peace. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will next be in session tomorrow.